My thought came out.
Yes. The funds of builders.
Oh.
Glad you got here. Can I have a second?
Yeah. You're going to need my help.
Good evening. This is the Cortez City Council Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five, and the time is seven-thirty P M. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Danielle, can we have the roll call?
Keefe Offer.
Here.
Dee Haven.
Here.
Spruill.
Here.
Dobree.
Here.
Randall.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Medina.
Here. All right. Do we have approval of the agenda as presented or any changes that could happen?
I move that council approve the agenda as presented.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis.
Keefe Offer.
Aye.
Randall.
Yes.
Dee Haven.
Aye.
Spruill.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Dobree.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. All right. We're going to move on to number two on our agenda, the Consent Agenda. The listing on our Consent Agenda is a group of items to be acted on with a single motion and vote. This agenda is designed to expedite the handling of limited routine matters by City Council. Either the public or a council member may request that an item may be removed from the Consent Agenda at the time prior to council's vote. I'll ask if a citizen or council member wishes to have any specific item removed from the Consent Agenda for discussion after reading the list. A, approval of City Council meeting minutes for September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five. B, approval of the expenditure list for September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. C, approval of a renewal application of a hotel and restaurant liquor license for Lounging Lizard, Inc., D B A Lounging Lizard, located at Two West Main Street, Cortez. And D, approval of applications for special event permits for the Cortez Area Chamber of Commerce for events on October ninth and October twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. Would anyone like to see an item removed for discussion?
I move that council approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded.
Spruill.
Yes.
Randall.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Dee Haven.
Yes.
Keefe Offer.
Aye.
Dobree.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes. All right. We're moving on to number three on our agenda, Public Participation. There is no limit to the number of speakers, although public comment will be held to an overall time limit of thirty minutes. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes per person. Thank you. Only, may only speak once and may not cede time to another commenter. All right. I'd like to invite James McGinley. And then just make sure the microphone is green when you get there.
Take your time on getting the start, please.
Yeah. We'll wait till you have to get up there. All right. Is your microphone on?
Uh, is my microphone on?
Oh, yeah. Try the taller one, maybe.
Okay. There you go. You're on. Thank you. I think I'm on.
Great. Thank you.
James McGinley, um, one-eleven South Elm Street. Friends, you have built and operate in Cortez some amazing, very expensive to operate components of a factory to take broken folks on the street and bring them to be great citizens. But we approach about a hundred percent failure rate because there are some missing pieces. I'm dumbstruck seven days a week witnessing the life-giving treatment by the staff throughout this building, many of whom I've now worked with. The city and county courts and law enforcement, the library staff. You've done all this good work, but without thinking about it, we are feeding these folks a deadly diet every day that undoes all that good work, all of it. Let me try and explain what I mean. Our street citizens are dying for work. Every morning for weeks, uh, by the firehouse while I offer coffee and sibling hood, this fellow asks, "James, can I have two bucks for a burger boy?" No, I always say. Weeks later, "James, if I pick up all the trash in the firehouse to City Market Ally, can I have two bucks?" It is now a daily ritual. One-eleven South Elm Street took ownership of me last Monday. It's called Master Jesus Base Camp. It needed a six-foot-high privacy fence all around the perimeter. Hey, Mark Hightower, a master builder in Cortez, if I can round up some street siblings, will you lead them? Nine o'clock Friday morning, would anyone show up? They didn't. Instead, they showed up at eight fifteen. My challenge was staying out of their way as they raced to work three days. First time I have ever seen them joyful. We are feeding our street citizens junk. Free food, free hangout space. Let's start feeding them what we feed ourselves. Meaningful work. The agencies, as I've mentioned, with the help of Pinion Project, often get folks into incredibly expensive, miraculously effective rehab. And then we bring them back to this deadly diet of free food and hanging out all day long, no responsibilities, and the deadly indignity of no safe place to pitch a tent. No wonder nearly one hundred percent self-destruct within days of reentry to Cortez. Let's start feeding these folks meaningful work in exchange for the hangout space and free food. Expanding the community service mechanism might point the way. Let's also start individual comprehensive reentry plans, or let's stop wasting this money on courts and rehab. And let's pilot a safe, dignified place to pitch a tent, uh, from six to six. James, what's the rush? You're doing all this great work to save people, and no one's being saved.
Well, thank.
Come back and expand a little bit. Maybe someone later can.
Okay. And thank you for providing extended comment, um, on paper. Thanks for providing the extended comment, um, in writing. And then, um, we do have a, a community meeting, um, but I would like to connect you with, um, I think Creighton or our, um, library director. Beth is on that for, um, the group that kind of leads that. It's like a, a unhoused, yeah. Okay. Well, unfortunately, we can't have a conversation, but thank you. Okay. Do we have any other, of someone, anyone else from the audience who'd like to speak? Okay. We will move on on our agenda, no number four presentations. We have none tonight. Uh, so number five is our public hearing, public hearings. So five A is ordinance number thirteen forty-six, series two thousand and twenty-five. Our second and final reading of an ordinance amending the Code Ordinance, Resolutions, Guidelines, and Protocols for the City of Cortez to allow City Council members to participate in City Council, or Council meetings remotely via, via video conferencing or other electronic means. Presented by Patrick Coleman, City Attorney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you'll recall, we've been wrestling with this issue actually since, I think, early June. It finally came to fruition with a first reading of the ordinance two weeks ago and is now before you for second reading and public hearing. And, uh, the, uh, obviously the purpose is to allow council members to participate remotely a limited number of times per year. And I think the other key component currently as written, the, the ordinance says a maximum of six times per year and a maximum of two council members per meeting. And it's on a first come, first served basis, so, uh, the, uh, council members would have to notify the clerk's office that they intend to participate remotely. And the first two that provide notice would be the two that are allowed. And, uh, so I would present it to you on second reading and, uh, again remind you that it's, uh, subject to a public hearing. And, uh, I'm open to any questions.
Great. Thank you. All right. I know we've talked about this pretty extensively, but do we have any, any comment before I open for public hearing? Go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I have a, I have a question. Um, Pat, you at a previous meeting said even if this is passed, it would still need to be in the charter update. Is that correct?
No. What I said was I would recommend that we clarify the charter language to specifically allow this. Uh, it's, it's my opinion that the, the charter language simply says that councils shall appear at City Hall. And I believe virtual appearance would satisfy that requirement. But obviously that, that's something that would be s- subject to disagreement, I think, uh, perhaps from people on the board or the council at this point. But, uh, I think to avoid confusion in the future with, with new boards that haven't participated in this discussion, uh, I would recommend that, uh, if, if this passes tonight, that as part of the charter amendments, we clarify that, uh, so that virtual attendance counts as appearing at City Hall.
Okay. Thanks, Pat.
The six, I have a question for you. The six, uh, times that they can miss or, uh, call in, is that in a calendar year or how is that structured?
Yes, in a calendar year.
So virtually, if someone wanted to participate in this, they wouldn't have to come the rest of the, the rest of the year? Because we have six meetings, no, eight meetings.
As it's currently written, that, that would be the case.
Well, what do you mean we have eight meetings?
No, I, I misspoke.
Oh, okay. 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 Um, and I think in our charter, if you miss three months' worth of meetings, you're kind of default kicked off council, which is twelve meetings?
Yes.
Nine.
Nine, yeah.
Okay. Um, well, and I, I feel comfortable with the only two at a time, so that means we would still have a quorum in the room. You know, I, because I think we would all prefer to be in person. It's just a matter of, of accommodating folks, um, so that they can still participate regardless of what they're going through. Of what, you know, why they can't be in person, so. Any other comments?
Yeah. I'd just like to, uh, make a few comments since this is a second and final reading. And I, uh, I've mentioned my support for this in the past, but, uh, very briefly, this allows flexibility for council members. And I think as we look at, uh, potentially new council members coming on board, it opens it up more for, um, people who are working. It opens it up more for mothers-to-be, uh, work, working mothers, et cetera, to allow this, um, attending via video conferencing. I think it also aligns us more with, uh, workplace practices. And I think as a city, um, you know, we should, we should be one of the leaders, uh, using technology. So I, I think we should be embracing this versus resisting it. And I think that our city, uh, deserves a city council that shows up no matter where, where they are located.
While, while I agree with a lot of what Counselor Lewis just said, I, I don't think that we have the power to do this. And I think that anything that is, anything in our charter that doesn't specifically give us the power, I think we need to be extremely cautious about, about overstepping our limits, even for what people would consider a good cause. Um, I, I think our charter specifically, Article One, Section Three, says all powers of the council shall be exercised in the manner prescribed by the charter. I think our charter already prescribes how we do our meetings. And I think the only way and the appropriate way to, to go about this is through the charter change that is already in process. So that would be my, my opposition.
I truly appreciate the thought behind this ordinance. Um, I appreciate the ability to be flexible and to be more inclusive. I, I'm not sure that I would automatically assume that if we allow virtual meetings that we're going to get better candidates or more candidates for council. So I would, I would not necessarily concede that. I have some thoughts on this that I'd like to share and at least put them out there so at least you can understand what my thought process is on this. And while I be, I, uh, agree with the, uh, Council Member Lewis, I also agree with you, Rob. And that is like for time immortal, people who, when we've gotten together, we've formed groups and communities and families and businesses, and they've all had a code of conduct associated with them. If you're going to be a part of this group, and particularly in the governance of this group, you participated in a code of conduct. And our code of conduct, um, is, directly relates to how we conduct the government business here, the, the city government business. And our city charter states very specifically how that's to be done. It doesn't leave us any, any room for meandering. We can't argue with the meaning of the word "at" or "at City Hall" or "present" or "attend" or "attending" as, as what the ordinance states in, in paragraph five, first sentence, that we're going to define and clarify these things. I know what "at City Hall" means. I know what physically "present" means. The charter is really specific about this. Also in paragraph six of this first sentence, it's, it states that we want to amend the rules. I get that you, we want to amend the rules and we, that we want to allow virtual meetings. I don't, there's nothing evil in virtual meetings. I have no, nothing against them. I'm just against the process that we're using to do this. To change the way this city business is done, it needs to be done in accordance with the charter because the charter is the gold standard for this. It's the equivalent of our city constitution. It codifies the operation and the procedures of our city government, particularly the City Council. And it clearly states in the city code, it, the City Council shall meet at the City Hall. I have no confusion what "meeting at the City Hall" means. It's interesting about, two meetings ago, we had a young gentleman come before us and state, and he stood here and he stated in the public comments about how important it was to him to come and participate at the presence of and in the place of the, where we do the business of the people. And to me, that really spoke. He talked about the, the, um, problems that he had with COVID and virtual meetings and how, and how it just changed the culture entirely. And I would agree that our City Council was adopted in nineteen fifty-seven. And is, there's no way that whoever was, uh, doing the adopting, and they were citizens like we are, doing the best they could with what they had. But they, I have to believe that they on purpose chose to not include the participation in a telephone contact or telephone call during that time, which was very easily accessible. And they too were having problems with life and dealing with issues. And they, there's no way they could have anticipated the technological advances that we've made in the form, particularly in the form. But it's not nineteen fifty-seven now, and virtual meetings are convenient and everyone's doing them. And, um, uh, we do them all the time. We're, we're not strangers to them. They're convenient. We're not in the quote "stone age" anymore. And the City Council even participated in, in these meetings when we were in the COVID. Now, I wasn't on City Council, but some of you were. And there's different opinions about how that worked out. But that's, I mean, we've been here and done this, or at least our predecessors have. So I agree with many points of it. In fact, I could probably benefit as much as anyone on this council by having this happen. But I'm a believer in rules, and I believe in our city charter. And it's not currently allowed in the current Cortez City Charter. In that charter has to be changed by a vote of the people for this to be allowed, not by proposing an ordinance, ordinance to backdoor our way around it. So one reference that we have for performing the city's business is the Cortez City Council Information Packet. And in, in it, on page two is a thing called the Rules of the Road. And the third rule of the road states that we are to avoid conflicts between private and public duties and to always put the public interest first. And I'm not sure that this really puts the public interest first. It's really of no benefit to the citizens that I can see. It results in a direct loss of communi- human communication and contact between us, the elected officials sitting here today, our city staff who's out here with us and the city citizens who are with us. We all face life challenges, births and childcare and family and work and illness and death. And they affect all of us. It doesn't just affect the council members. The second rule that I'd like to refer to in the Rules of the Road for the Cortez City Council Information Packet is number five. And it states refrain, the council shall refrain from securing special privileges or exemptions for oneself that are not available to all citizens. Now, it's required in, in the charter for the city manager and the city attorney and the city clerk to attend these meetings. It's required for us to attend as city council members. It's up to the city manager to decide as an option whether he asks the city, um, uh, senior staff to attend these meetings. And he does. And I believe, now I can't speak for our city manager, but I believe he does it so that we can have direct access to our city managers, so that they can have direct access to us. And this, and the citizens who are here can have that interaction if necessary. I think it's a moral duty for us as leaders, as we sit up on this dais, to abide by the same rules and the same requirements and the same standards that those who are sitting out in this audience do to serve us. I think that's our responsibility. I think, and I, I truly believe this, and it's not, and I don't want anybody to take this personally, supporting this or not, but I believe this proposed ordinance is an attempt to grant city council members an exception from the clearly stated requirements of the physical attendance of, at the council meetings that is stated in the Cortez City Charter. Now, I also believe it's an example, or it could be an example, if we choose to vote this way, of those who would be in power attempting to grant themselves special exemptions from the rules by changing those rules before we let the people or the citizens of Cortez vote on changing the city ca- uh, charter. And they, and we need to give them the opportunity to, to, to do this at the ballot box. I think us doing it ourselves is unfair and against the spirit of the law. This is an opportunity for us to lead by example. We need to follow the rules, in my opinion, as outlined in this Cortez City Home Rule Charter, which is the true authority on the conduct of the city council business. I would urge us to resist the urge to put our personal interests above this Cortez Charter by allowing and passing this before the implementation or giving the voters a chance to vote on it. I trust the people that we serve are going to consider the issue and vote in favor of or in opposition to it. That's fine. I'll go with it either way. It doesn't matter to me. I'm, I'm good with it either way. But I think that we need to gracefully accept those, the vote of those we serve and not put our first interests first. And that's my feeling. Thanks for listening.
Any other comments before I open this? Go ahead.
Yeah. I just have some, um, comments. I think the charter is a living document in that the charter specifically does allow us to make changes via ordinance and that this is within the bounds of, um, City Council's, um, rights to do. I don't think it is going against the meaning or the foundation of the charter. I think it's unfortunate that it's taken councils so long to update the charter. And I'm glad that some things are being updated and they have been updated in the past via ordinance. Um, I mean, if we stuck with the character of the original charter, then only men would be up here. We would all go by he/him pronouns. So I believe this is a chance to modernize and allow for accessibility. I also believe it's a way that council could be fully committed to their, and engage in their daily lives and in public service. I think the commitment of people wanting to be here when they're in times when they can't be here physically shows how committed people are to this service. And that this, we've spent a lot of time looking at this in other communities', um, virtual attendance policies, and we've come up with a good structure. So I am in favor of this, and it, I believe it's actually more restrictive than most, it is more restrictive than most communities that I've, that I have looked at. So I just think it's a, it's time for Cortez to follow best standards that are being shown everywhere instead of being the last to get in line.
Um, I'm going to open it up for, for public comment and then I'll say my piece. All right. We'll open this for public hearing. Anyone from the, uh, audience want to speak for or against? Go ahead.
Susan Kinnit, five-one-one South Cedar Street. I think I've already kind of made it clear what I think about this, but I'm really worried that the people that want to do this have not thought this out. Because I'm wondering what you're going to do if you do these kind of meetings and then the technology fails. Because you would not believe how many meetings that I've been to where everyone is sitting there waiting for the technology to allow someone to attend the meeting that way. And it's really, really, to me, is just not right that all these people are sitting here to see you sitting in that seat, and then they can't even, what are you going to do if you're needed for a vote and you can't vote because the technology failed? And please don't tell me that it's not going to because I see it over and over and over again. So please think about that before you say yes.
So please think about that before you say yes to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other speakers, please?
I don't know the background of this, but I do have several comments I'd like to I don't know how cities work. I've been away from this for decades. But I assume that there is a leadership function. And a leader showing up or not showing up, leaders showing up or not showing up is a statement. I spent a lot of time in the courts, sitting with our homeless citizens, so they're not alone. WebEx is a wonderful thing. But over and over, the courts will explain to someone that wants to do WebEx, "If you're in town, you need to be here. If there's an extenuating circumstance where you have to be out of town, well, then maybe we can allow you on WebEx." Seems to me that's a very sound principle. I appreciate the council members' comments about not quickly violating the city charter. That sounds like a really good thing to me. But I think the strongest feeling I have is the first one. If city council members don't show up, that is going to be taken as a statement of commitment. And I don't know that we want to glibly have you folks want to make that statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for the public hearing portion? All right, we'll close that. And then I do want to share that we got written comments. We got about 12 emails, and all were in support of this ordinance. The general sentiment read in here is the benefit has brought to people who are on boards to be able to still participate in their boards remotely. And then the other big theme that is in here is ADA compliance. And so that's what I would like to talk about. I think this can be interpreted as just the council trying to benefit from being able to go anywhere and attend virtually. But to me, this is just the baby step so that we can figure out the technology, because we're eventually going to have to allow public comment and other attendance virtually, which almost all other organizations in our community do, and almost all other cities do. So I think that this is just the first step in trying to make sure that this works well, and leading with the positive intent that this is kind of a plan B for anybody who needs it. Obviously, we all want to be here in person. We benefit from that. But we're trying to catch up with the ADA rules that are coming from the state, and just the general way that accessibility is moving to allow people to participate regardless of their circumstance, and have more options to participate in their local government. So. Any other comments, or?
I would just note that we do already allow virtual comment by email, as you just mentioned. We receive emails for many issues, and always include them in our packet as part of the public record.
Yep. All right.
I move that council approve on second and final reading, ordinance number 1346, series 2025, and ordinance amending the code ordinances, resolutions, guidelines, and protocols of the city of Cortez to allow city council members to participate in council meetings remotely via video conferencing or other electronic means.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Lewis.
Randall.
No.
Dobry.
No.
Dehaven.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Spruill.
No.
Keefhoffer.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to move on to 5B on our agenda, ordinance number 1347, the second and final reading for an ordinance amending the code of the city of Cortez to include regulations regarding natural medicine, presented by Patrick Coleman, city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, this item has been worked on extensively by council and staff through a series of work sessions, as well as being introduced as a draft ordinance at a previous council meeting. It was presented on first reading at the last council meeting, and is now before you on second reading. I will note that there is one suggested change from the first reading that is in the item before you, and that deals with, the language spoke to natural medicine healing centers, and I think based on my understanding of the council's intent, they wanted the location requirements applicable to all natural medicine facilities, not just the healing centers. And so the red line in the version of the ordinance before you just changes, the one word deletes "healing centers" and adds "businesses" in place of that. I think that was the intent. Obviously, the healing centers get the most focus and discussion, because that's when the natural medicine is actually being used. But I think the idea was that the law allows the city to regulate location as one of the items, and you have designated some zone districts where it will be allowed. And I think the idea, based on my understanding, and I could be incorrect, is that you wanted the location restrictions applicable to all natural medicine business, not just the healing centers. So with that, I'll present it to you as an ordinance on second reading with the recommendation that the amendment from first reading be added to delete "healing centers" and add "businesses" in that paragraph.
Would we need to reference that in a motion, then?
Yes.
All right, any, yeah, go ahead.
Council, there's one item in here that we spoke of a couple of times, and I hate to bring it up, but it got partially put in and partially left out. And that was on page four of five, under 4.302K. It currently reads, "Manufacturers of natural medicine products shall not produce, manufacture, or administer products in a candy form." And all that was good. I think we're in total agreement with that. But I believe it was to also include manufacturers and clinical facilitators, or manufacturers and healing centers shall not produce, manufacture, or administer, because it wouldn't be that the manufacturers would be administering. So I just wanted to be sure that whoever would be administering is included in that verbiage.
Can you pull up the ordinance? I can't hear. I'm paused. I'm having technical difficulties with my computer. It's not working. So is your suggestion that paragraph K be amended to read manufacturers or healing?
Maybe "and healing centered."
"And healing centers of using natural medicine products shall not..."
Thank you.
So just add manufacturers and healing centers.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I don't know if it's necessary to put in clinical facilitators. I don't, I mean, I think the clinical facilitators have the option of administering the product in the home. I don't know that we're going to see a lot of that, but they would also be possibly administering. And we don't, I mean, I think the goal of this paragraph and this subsection is to say that we're not going to have any candy or confectionaries being in the community legally.
Okay, so make it manufacturers, comma, healing centers, and clinical facilitators. And as a reminder, this is second reading, so you'll need to open the public comment portion.
Yeah, okay. All right, we'll open this up for the public hearing portion. Do we have anyone from the audience who would like to speak on the topic of our natural medicine ordinance? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion. Thanks for that catch, Councilmember Randall. So it looks like section 4-301D, and then section 4-302K are the two amendments.
That would be correct.
Ready for a motion?
I move that council approve on second and final reading, ordinance number 1347, series 2025, an ordinance which amends the code of the city of Cortez to include the regulation of natural medicine healing centers, cultivation facilities, product manufacturers, testing facilities, and any other related license or permit involving natural medicine, which includes without limitation psilocybin and psilocin, with the two amendments suggested to include all natural medicine businesses.
Second.
I guess I would indicate that the one amendment in section 4-301D deals with the inclusion of all natural medicine businesses, and the amendment for section 4.302K adds healing centers and clinical facilitators after the word "manufacturers."
Yes.
Okay. All right, motion made by Dobry and seconded by Keefhoffer.
Randall. Yes. Lewis.
Yes.
Spruill.
Yes.
Keefhoffer.
Aye.
Dehaven.
Yes.
Dobry.
Yes.
Medina.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to move on to 5C on our agenda, ordinance number 1348, second and final reading with addition, to this ordinance, with additional changes, amending the code of the city of Cortez regarding distance measurements and signage for medical and retail marijuana establishments, presented by...
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The council had asked that staff create regulations dealing with the distance measurements, which previously had been done using, as a person would travel on streets and sidewalks, and use that as the basis for measuring distances between marijuana facilities and schools or other marijuana businesses, and schools, daycare centers, that sort of thing that are included in the restrictions. With the assistance of the GIS department, the staff came up with a revised set of measurements that essentially measure the distance as the crow flies, directly without any use of sidewalks or streets. And it counsels suggestion that was included as the measuring idea for the first reading of the ordinance. The other change was a change in the marijuana signage, and that includes some restrictions on what types of signage may be brought forward. And under section 4-11, excuse me, H, there are eight restrictions on signage that were added. And those restrictions were also added to section 4-20, or 220, letter J. And the reason they're in there twice is we have separate regulations for medical marijuana and marijuana retail establishments. So the signage amendments apply to both types of businesses. What you have before you is a little different than what was presented on first reading. There was some concern about whether or not these regulations would apply to existing marijuana businesses. And to clarify that, I pulled some language out of our existing land use code regarding legal non-conforming uses. And essentially, it says that if you have an existing medical marijuana or retail marijuana facility, as of the effective date of this ordinance, this ordinance does not apply to your facility. It becomes a legal non-conforming use. Now, there are some restrictions, and these come out of the land use code. If the building is destroyed by more than 50%, then you lose it, and you can't rebuild if it doesn't comply with these regulations. If you abandon the building for a year or more, abandon the operation of the business, then these regulations will apply if you want to reopen it. If you transfer ownership, but the business keeps running, and there maybe is just a minor shutdown for new owners to get in, that doesn't constitute abandonment. So you can transfer ownership and maintain your legal non-conforming status. And again, the restrictions apply both to the medical marijuana and to the retail marijuana sales establishments. So in the ordinance that you have in front of you, the new language is in section 4-221, which applies to retail marijuana, and in 4-114, which applies to medical marijuana businesses. So with that, I would recommend that you add the non-conforming, legal non-conforming, often referred to as a grandfathering clause into the second reading part of the ordinance. And unless you have questions, that's all I have on that issue.
Thanks for adding that language in. Any comments before I open it for public hearing? Okay. Anyone, or we'll open this up for public hearing. Anyone from the audience like to speak on behalf of this topic? Anyone from the audience like to speak, um, on behalf of this topic? All right, uh, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing portion, um, of this agenda item.
You know, I think as with, um, ordinance number thirteen forty-seven, we've spent much time at council meetings and, uh, workshop sessions discussing this. And I think we finally, uh, have it to a point that we're, uh, ready to go to vote with this. So, so with that, uh, in mind, I move that council approve on second and final reading, ordinance number thirteen forty-eight, series twenty twenty-five, as presented. Ordinance amending the code, excuse me, I meant, uh, yeah, uh, amending the, um, code of the city of Cortez regarding distance measurements and signage for medical and retail marijuana establishments, and including amendments, section four dash one one four, non-conforming uses, and section four dash two two one, non-conforming uses.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keef offer?
Aye.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So that concludes our public hearing portion. So we'll move on to number six on our agenda. Unfinished business, we have none tonight. So number seven is new business. Seven A is the purchase of a vacuum trailer for the Cortez, uh, Public Works Streets Division, uh, presented by Casey Simpson, our interim director of public works.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I realize I didn't put a little celebration at the beginning of this, under the background section. The, the realization that we were a little shy on equipment of, um, such import happened because we are almost fully staffed in our new water line installation crew. And so with the rollout of that crew and the resulting work and expansion of work associated, it became clear that they couldn't stay mobilized, or we were demobilizing and mobilizing and moving all over town with the one vacuum trailer that we had. Additionally, with three crews trying to use one piece of equipment, we began to see a lot of wear and tear on the equipment, different hands operating it. I believe there was, uh, fourteen different people at different times using it. And, um, so the, the, the maintenance on the one trailer we had, uh, started to uptick. With this realization, we went out and we looked at, um, a few different vacuum trailer options. These are also known as pot holders. They are really cool pieces of equipment. You can dig around utilities safely and, um, and quickly. We decided on the same type of vacuum trailer that we have. The staff are comfortable using it. The maintenance shop is comfortable repairing the unit that we have, which was, um, I think the deciding factor in the selection of the vacuum trailer. And, um, so I'm coming to you tonight, uh, with the ask to, um, to approve the purchase of a new vacuum trailer. Are there any questions?
No, I, I have no questions, just some comments, Casey. Uh, again, as I always say, appreciate the, uh, matrix that you developed, that is very helpful for us to compare. Also, I think it's, uh, great that you're, you're trying to keep some consistency in, in the type of, uh, the brand of equipment that you use. As far as parts and, and learning how to operate it and maintain it, et cetera, it makes a lot of sense. So I, I'm in, uh, definitely in favor of this.
I move that city council approve the acquisition of the Vermeer VX fifty vacuum trailer from Vermeer Sales and, or Sales and Service of Colorado Inc. for the Cortez Public Works Department in the amount of ninety-five thousand, seven hundred.
Second.
All right, motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Lewis.
Dobree?
Yes.
Keef offer?
Aye.
Randall?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to seven B on our agenda, Service Center Water Dock Replacement, uh, presented by Casey Simpson, interim, uh, director of public works.
Yeah, um, so a- as you can see with the background, this, uh, the issues going, or the issues surrounding the water dock have gone back a number of years. Sometime around June, I became aware that, uh, we were, well, what I, what first alerted me was, um, the amount of revenue that our water dock was generating. And it has been drastically declining, um, this year. And ever since the, um, the three-inch assembly failed. Uh, upon investigation of the water dock, I noticed that, uh, the components were pretty aged, weathered. They're having to use a, a conversion nozzle to get the two-inch water into a three-inch hose, uh, which causes the public to struggle in some cases. And, um, and started trying to, to tackle the issue. This is a pretty complex, uh, or it has been a complex, uh, project for me. Certainly, water docks and bulk water distribution systems are a, a very specialized part of the industry. And we put out two RFPs trying to secure, uh, a contractor for this project to find out that, the equipment vendors don't actually sell direct to municipalities in most cases. They, they work with a, a contractor who's familiar with installing bulk water stations. So we, we ended up finding, um, there's, there's four companies that really make bulk water stations in the United States. We ended up, uh, reducing that to three that we interviewed, and we found one organization that sells a turnkey system that our staff can install, reducing the, the overall, um, project costs. That, that, um, vendor is Flowpoint, and there's an accompanying score sheet there. We took a lot into consideration. Again, this is a project that's been in the works, or at least being looked at for, um, four years now. So I'm pretty excited to get it rolling. My goal with this would be to reduce the, uh, the revenue, um, and availability of water to the, uh, twenty eighteen levels. So I guess, pending questions, um, yeah, staff, uh, are recommending that council approve selection of Flowpoint, and allow the city manager to negotiate with Flowpoint Environmental Systems, Inc.
I move that council select the quote from Flowpoint Environmental.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Um, I was just curious, like, where are people getting water when our station then is, is not functional?
There are, so we actually did look into who, uh, the other bulk water stations in the area. The Northern Navajo Reservation has a number of them. Uh, Dove Creek has one, Lewis has one, Dolores has one. So, uh, Durango has some, La Plata County has some. I mean, there's bulk water stations around. All of them use one of the four equip- all of those, um, bulk water stations use equipment provided by one of the four distributors of this type of equipment. You know, different municipalities had different testimonials about why to choose one or the other, and what components to include. Um, we're seeking to have a cashless system because we do have a staff, we have staff available to, um, take cash and provide, uh, that account balance online. And we have had the current water dock broken into a number of times because any of the water docks, uh, the testimonials or the people who have water docks basically say that any water dock that's left unattended is going to get broken into. So there's a lot of good information that we learned through that process. But, um, my guess would be that the people who couldn't access the city's water would go to the nearest one, depending on where they live. And also, unfortunately, I think the city lost a lot of revenue due to, um, like tourism traffic, uh, RVs. We see a lot of RVs come through. And if we don't, um, have, we don't have a card reader now. So, you know, somebody from North Dakota is not going to come in, establish an account with the city of Cortez and buy water that way. They're gonna, they want a cashless, um, typically a credit card tap system, so.
Also, thank you for the, the timeline, that was.
Yeah, it's fun, huh?
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Casey.
I move that council select the quote from Flowpoint Environmental Systems, Inc., as quoted, price of seventy-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars and ninety-seven cents for the Service Center Water Dock Replacement, and that the city manager be authorized to negotiate and sign a contract on behalf of the city for this purpose.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree.
Spruul?
Yes.
Keef offer?
Aye.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to seven C on our agenda, application for Department of Local Affairs pre-development grant funding for Park Village Housing Project, uh, presented by Drew Sanders, city manager.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Just quickly, uh, our, uh, economic development team was prepared to present this to you this evening, but further information, since this was placed on the agenda, indicates that, uh, we are not ready for this grant, nor does it necessarily fit our needs. So we're asking council to table this this evening. And likely, we will come back in the spring if, uh, the new offering on this, um, matches our needs. But, uh, that seems a little ways off at the moment. But for tonight's purposes, if we could request a tabling.
Okay.
I move that we table this item.
Second.
Motion made by Dobree and seconded by Lewis.
Keef offer?
Aye.
Spruul?
Yes.
Dobree? Lewis?
Yes.
Dehaven? Randall?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
All right, we're moving on to seven D on our agenda. Authorize the mayor to sign a letter from the Colorado Department of Transportation regarding the enhancement of Denny Lake Park. And this will be presented by Creighton Wright, our director of Parks and Recreation, but we have a council member.
Before we move on with this, uh, since I've worked on this project in a previous position at the county on the grant writing side, I'm going to recuse myself from this item.
Thank you. So we'll wait for Councilmember Dobree to leave the room, and then we'll start our presentation.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I am here today, this item is effectively clearing a path for the pathways to Mesa Verde Project. Uh, this is a project that formerly the county started working on in twenty sixteen, but I understand concepts and other planning has gone back since the early two thousands. The broad concept of the pathways to Mesa Verde is to make a connection from Cortez to Mesa Verde National Park, and then from Mesa Verde National Park into Menkes. Uh, a former governor identified this trail, this connection, as one of the sixteen most important in the state. There is a whole lot of extra background information in the staff report that I'll skip over for the time being. It's very similar to the information you heard just at the last council meeting, as this is a, a bit of a follow-on item. Um, that item that you heard at the last council meeting was to sign a letter of support for other grant opportunities that the county is, uh, potentially seeking to gain funding for this project. This item in particular is kind of complicated, admittedly. Uh, this item basically designates that Denny Lake Park isn't being adversely impacted by the plans for the pathways to Mesa Verde. This is a federal requirement. Um, generally speaking, a, if a trail or a transportation project, and I'll read the legal mumbo jumbo here in a second, but I'm going to try and simplify it as best I can. If a federal transportation project goes through a recreation resource, they need to mitigate that impact that happens on that resource. Because this project is proposing to make enhancements to Denny Lake Park, it is eligible for a waiver from this mitigation. So now, the actual mumbo jumbo. Section four F of the U.S. Department of Transportation Act of nineteen sixty-six affords special protection to parks and recreational resources and requires specific mitigate mitigation when these resources are impacted by federally funded transportation projects. Since Denny Lake Park is owned and maintained by the city and open to the public for recreational use, it is therefore protected under section four F. There are various exceptions to section four F requirements, including transportation enhancement projects, and a bunch of federal numbers and letters. Section four F enhancement exception can be applied when the following criteria are met. Number one, the use of section four F property is solely for the purpose of preserving or enhancing activity, feature, or attribute that qualifies the property for section four F protection. The officials with jurisdiction over, uh, and number two, the section, the officials with jurisdiction over four F, I think there's a word missing there, concurs that it's eligible for an exemption. So the Colorado Department of Transportation completed an analysis looking at the proposed trail alignment and the improvements that will be made to Denny Lake Park. They have found that Denny Lake is eligible for section four F exemption because they're actually providing enhancements to Denny Lake Park as opposed to unmitigated impacts. I, the Parks and Recreation Department, supports the CDOT findings and concurs that the pass to Mesa Verde Project is eligible for, for F exemption. Our city attorney has reviewed the letter that we're asking the mayor to sign and has proposed a change that has already been, um, included in the, the letter that's in the packet there. And I'm not going to read what it said before, but I'm going to read the revised language. As a party responsible for the management of the proposed section four F properties identified in this letter, city of Cortez is in concurrence with the determination listed above. The city's concurrence is conditioned upon the final proposal for segment A, phase three SUP, being presented to the city for its approval of specific improvements to be constructed on city-owned property or controlled property at Denny Lake Park. So what all of this is saying is that the, uh, pass to Mesa Verde, um, project trail originates from Denny Lake Park, and it goes east towards Mesa Verde National Park. That path from parking lot along an existing trail and building parts of a nonexistent trail is all going to be funded through a future grant project and has been contemplated in the current design as it reads today. Uh, the item that our city attorney added in here because we expect that this funding cycle and when actual funding, construction, and all that happens is likely years down the road. And there may be changes to that design and that plan. So that before it gets to the point of which the, uh, final alignment that is about to be constructed is determined, it comes back to city council for an approval before any construction or any formal action occurs. So with that, my recommendation is to authorize the mayor to sign the edited version of the Colorado Department of Transportation letter dated July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five regarding the CDOT project essay number two five two three six, section four F, enhancement of Denny Lake Park. And there is a proposed motion in the staff report. I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Um, I guess, I think that's a, a good point because by the time this is constructed, who knows if the dog park will have expanded more, or what else will be going on there. So, thank you.
Using your words, not mine, cutting through all the mumbo jumbo, will we be relinquishing any rights to the federal government or CDOT on our property?
Uh, we would, and Patrick, you may sound off on this and make sure I get this right. At this point, even if the trail is built, it is still within city property. It is still, um, regulated, I suppose, by city rules and regulations. The point at which it leaves city property, then it becomes county property and/or, uh, the jurisdiction of others. So while it is within our property, we still ma- manage and control that section of it. Patrick, would you agree with that?
Yes, and I, I think just boils down essentially, the, the city-
the, the city is concurring that the plans as they currently exist do not negatively impact Denny Lake Park such that mitigation measures would be required. And in fact, as Creighton said, the, the plans as presented enhance Denny Lake Park, so the city, by signing this letter, would be saying that we agree that the exemption would be applicable.
I, I guess my comment is I just don't wanna relinquish any of our rights, any of our property rights. We're not giving away anything to CDOT nor the federal government that belongs to the city of Cortez. I don't want them to come back two years from now and say, or twenty years even, saying, oh, I'm sorry, we built that, we put the money into it, it's ours. Or it's condemned, or whatever the case may be. And I just don't wanna be, I don't wanna go down that rabbit hole.
Yeah, and I, I don't think that is the case. Madam Mayor, I move that city council authorize the mayor to sign the edited letter from the Colorado Department of Transportation dated July 29, 2025 regarding CDOT Project Essay 25236, Section 4 Enhancement of Denny Lake Park.
Second.
Motion made by Lewis and seconded by Randall.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Keef Offer? Lewis?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Creighton. Alright, we're gonna move on to seven E on our agenda, Appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Presented by Daniel Wells.
Hi.
Oh yeah, sorry, Robert.
Good evening, everyone. So there is an opening on the Planning and Zoning Commission. An advertisement has been placed on the city's webpage and the newspaper and on Facebook. There's an opening due to Emily Waldron resigning from the board. Her term for, her term would have ended in November 2026, so this, if you fill the seat tonight, that is how long the term will be for. This evening at the work session, council interviewed Mr. Charles Burchini Jr. And staff recommends that he is appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. If council chooses not to appoint him, staff would continue to advertise for the open seat until the appointment is, or until the seat is filled by council.
I think Charles did a really good job in his interview and would be a good candidate for the commission, so I wanna move that Charles Burchini Jr. be appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the remainder of the term by, of departing Commissioner Emily Waldron.
Second.
Motion made by Dehaven and seconded by Keef Offer?
Lewis?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Keef Offer?
Aye.
Dobree?
Yes.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. Okay, we're moving on to seven F on our, on our agenda, the Appointment to the Historic Preservation Board. Presented by Daniel Wells, City Clerk.
Yes, there's also an opening for the Historic Preservation Board. This is due to member Rachel Weaver resigning from the board earlier this summer. Her seat is, she would have, her seat would have ended in this November, so this term would be for three years if this person is appointed. Today, during the work session, Ms. Diane McBride was interviewed. There was another candidate who was going to appear, but he was not here. So therefore, staff recommendation is that council appoints Diane McBride to the Historic Preservation Board. If council chooses, we, staff would continue to advertise for the open seat on the board. I just also wanted to mention that it is recommended by the Land Use Code that one of the members on the Historic Preservation Board is a Realtor and Rachel Weaver was the Realtor on the position. Diane McBride is not a Realtor, but that is only a recommendation, so I just, but I wanted to make you sure you guys were aware that that was something to consider.
I, I thought she was a great candidate. Last time she applied and it was a hard choice between her and Brian Yacuento, so I would be, I think it'd be great to get her on the board and we could focus on the next vacancy, be a Realtor.
I think that Diane brings in a great skill set. She understands prehistoric preservation. She understands the history of Cortez. She's been a local for many years. She's very enthusiastic. As you mentioned, she's applied before, so she's dedicated to serving on this board. So with that, I move that Diane McBride be appointed to the Historic Preservation Board for a three-year term.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Lewis and seconded by Dobree or Keef Offer?
Dobree?
Yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Randall?
Yes.
Keef Offer?
Aye.
Medina?
Yes. Great. We are moving on to number eight on our agenda, draft resolutions and ordinances we have none tonight. So number nine on our agenda is city attorney report.
No report, Madam Mayor.
Alright, number 10 on our agenda, city manager report.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I have three items this evening. First of all, is a bit of a bragging item, our Helen West with the Community and Economic Development Department is working with the Small Business Development Center and the Cortez Retail Enhancement Association to present a workshop on how to start a small business. That workshop will take place Tuesday, October 14, 2025, from 9:00 a.m. until noon in this building. Following the workshop, Region 9 will be giving a presentation from noon until 1:00 p.m. on Enterprise Zone Business Tax Credits that are available. Registration information for this event can be found on the Cortez City Calendar on the Cortez, or city of Cortez website. Next, if you are not aware already, the Lazy River at the Cortez Recreation Center has been reopened. We had some issues, structural issues next to that that made it a danger. Those issues have been mitigated and inspected and it is now open for use. Lastly, I just wanna remind everyone and invite the community, if you're so desired, to join us for the budget workshop, which is scheduled for this Friday at 8:30 a.m. in this room. This is for us to discuss with our council, the fiscal year 2026 budget and the directors will all be giving presentations on that for the council. As a reminder, the public is invited to that, however, we will not be taking public comments during that time. So that concludes my, my report.
Thank you. Okay, number 11 on our agenda, City Council Committee Reports. 11A is the mayor's report on the workshop. So we interviewed our candidates that we just appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission and the Historic Preservation Board. We interviewed Charles Burchini Jr. who we just appointed to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We interviewed Diane McBride, who we just appointed to the Historic Preservation Board. And then we had a presentation from Tri-City Soccer, from Ben Burkett. This Tri-City Soccer is a non-for-profit. They develop soccer skills, teamwork, and camaraderie in the youth. They've been around a long time. Tri-City is, stands for Cortez, Dolores, and Dove Creek. Four hundred and seventy-five kids signed up this fall and that's the most that they've had before. And that's roughly one in seven kids are participating in this soccer program. They do two seasons, fall and spring. They have four games a week. They have forty-three coaches who are all volunteers. They represent just about every town in our community and, and beyond our county. Mankas, Dolores, Toayac, Cajon, Egner, Dove Creek, Pleasant View, and Lewis. And then the, they were also here to thank the Parks Department for all of the help that they've provided and support for this, these nonprofit games and skills building. And then they mentioned that their, one impact is goals, the, the physical soccer goals. Those are always needing to be replaced and that is a larger cost. And then for kids to participate, there are scholarships and they are trying to keep this affordable. So if anyone wants to learn more, contact Ben Burkett or Emily Mason or watch our workshop. Okay, and then we're gonna move on to 11B, which is other board reports. Councilmember Keef Offer?
I attended the library board meeting. Some big news, tomorrow, the library is switching to Aspen Cat ILS System, which is the same system that Dolores and Mankas use. It's incredibly user-friendly and will allow us to do interlibrary loans in our county. So thank you to Beth and, and her team for that. Beth has already also been working with Team Up to make the library a designated safe space for teens. And she, they have created a new logo for the library that you can see on our website or on social medias, if you wanna check that out. In addition, she's looking at the budget and moving some money around to where users act, to get more resources users are using, such as magazines. And the Friends of the Library is looking to have a library libation fundraiser event in March. And there is also a Friends of the Library book sale that is over the Halloween holiday, so if you want to do some spooky reading, pick up some books there to support the library. You can also become a friend of the library on the library website, even if you don't have time to volunteer, there's it's just a $10 annual fee to, to get involved and support the library. So looking forward to the update to the Aspen Cat system and to see where, what comes next.
Dennis, any board report?
Yesterday evening, I attended the Mesa Verde Country Board Meeting. We had a discussion of the preliminary budget and strategic planning and kinda direction for next year and that's all.
Okay. Alright, then we'll move on. Oh, so I guess I attended the Rise Walk last weekend and that was for suicide awareness. That was a really great event. A lot of community, community members showed up. And then I also attended the Municipal Court Year Annual Event that brings court staff or municipal court staff and clerks or judges and clerks from around the region. Another great event. So thank you, Carla and Judge Padilla. Okay, so then we'll move on to number 12 on our agenda, public participation. Do we have anyone from the audience who would like to speak? There's no limit to the number of speakers and no over all-time limit. Alright, seeing none, other items of business, number 13, we do not have an executive session tonight. So number 14, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
A motion made by Dobree and seconded by Spruul?
Keef Offer?
Aye.
Randall?
Aye, yes.
Spruul?
Yes.
Dobree?
Yes.
Dehaven?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Medina?
Yes. Alright, thank you, everyone.